We will move to item three on the agenda, an update related to the 2019 novel coronavirus emergency and essential services in Stanislas County. Chief Executive Officer Jody Hayes.
Thank you very much, Chairwoman Olson and members of the board. My pleasure to update you this morning on our latest efforts and our emergency response related to COVID-19. This is our weekly update, and I'm going to be joined today with our Public Health Officer, Dr. Julie Washen-Pine, and also invite Assistant Executive Officer Keith Boggs to update us on a couple of items towards the end of this presentation. This is a moving target. I think all of you are familiar with that by now, and that literally our environment changes on a daily basis, and yesterday was no exception to that in preparation of today. We have spent weeks preparing for, to make some movements in Stanislas County, particularly over the last week, and working with our business community and our public health officials and so forth to determine what would be the right steps to take in Stanislas County. And we learned yesterday of the governor moving forward, finally, with providing some flexibility for local government to start to make some decisions here, whereas up until now, we have not been afforded that same level of opportunity. So that was a good development for us, and I want to speak about that for a little bit. But essentially, what I want to share with you is that a lot of work has gone into what's going to happen this week in Stanislas County. However, we have adjusted quite a bit of it within the last 24 hours. So I'm going to first start by just reminding everyone who's watching that there are a lot of folks involved in our entire leadership effort for this emergency response. And for those of you, because not everyone's going to be in those rooms and in those discussions, I do want to reiterate that our conversations and our analysis, our recommendations, they always start with a review of the data in our community and the scientific input of our public health officials, particularly our Dr. Julie Washen-Pine, our public health officer. We collectively review the information, we collectively review where we're at as a community, what are the trends that we're experiencing, what are the largest threats in our community, and we seek input from our public health officer. I think there are misconceptions out there about whether or not elected officials or people just call us bureaucrats, government bureaucrats, are making all of these decisions. And the truth is, this is a very collaborative process, but at the end of the day, it starts and it ends with a review of the data in our community and what are the scientific recommendations that would prompt us to make changes in our community. So we're going to share some things today, and we're going to preview what's to come in our community, but I think it's important that we start by acknowledging that that's where the conversation always starts and ends in Stanislas County. So our effort is to continue to adjust our guidelines based on what are the circumstances on the ground here in Stanislas County. The first thing I want to do, and I'm going to, we did a little bit of this last week, but we'll do it again, is I'm going to ask, Mary Ann Lilly's joining us here, our HSA Director, and she's going to point out our dashboard metrics, because I want to show the community, where can you go to see some of the same exact information that we are looking at? And Dr. V is going to preview some additional information as well, but if we could go ahead and bring up our data dashboard, I want to show the public exactly where you can find the level of information. I'm sorry, Liz, if you could go ahead and click us over. So while she's bringing that up, I want to point out that our data dashboard is a work in progress. So like many things related to this emergency, we've been criticized quite a bit for, you know, not doing certain things or overdoing other things and so forth. In this particular case, I'm very pleased with the work that our team has done to try to assemble the best dashboard we can. This is a work in progress. It's like, I can even tell by the display that's on the screen that, you know, the way that it minimizes in this particular web browser needs to be adjusted and so forth. We have a whole technical team working on these issues and so forth. But for those members of the community, you can go onto our data dashboard, and you can see the current status of COVID-19 in our community and the historical impacts as well. So the first tab is just related to our cases. You can see 428 cases. We had 17 new cases over the last 24 hours, and 267 presumed recovered individuals, and unfortunately, 15 deaths in Stanislas County related to COVID-19. We've had one death within the last 24-hour reporting period. If we go ahead and look at the hospital data there, this is very, very important information. I think at this point, we're displaying seven days' worth of data, but we'll go back and add some more history to that as well, because the trend over time is very, very important. We're very focused on our hospital daily bed count. We're receiving this information from local hospitals on a daily basis, and particularly our ICU daily bed count as well, and ventilators. So a lot of people have heard about ventilators and so forth. Throughout this entire emergency response, we've been blessed to have plenty of equipment and bed space and hospital capacity to support our local community, and for that, we're very, very thankful. We have 48 individuals currently in the hospital with COVID-related symptoms, and of those, about 33 of them are confirmed and 15 of them are suspected. That's important that we put up suspected, because that requires you to use the same level of personal protective equipment. You treat them as if they are positive in the hospital, so that's an important data element to track. But one number I want to point out that's really good on this chart, we have one individual confirmed COVID in ICU as of right now. We have seven that are suspected, so that number could certainly go up, but for a community of our size, that is a very good number, and that's a positive indicator for us. And then the next tab is our testing tab, and we're very pleased with the significant increase in the volume of testing that's occurring in our community, and that's happening throughout the state of California. I do have to acknowledge that it really has been the state's leadership that has pushed resources down to the local level to begin new testing. We started two new test sites this week in Keys and Patterson. I've already heard of some opportunities for us to improve some of that process, which we definitely will. And I think there's a misnomer out there that the prior test site in Salida was the only test site in Stanislas County. I think it's important, and I've probably said this before, so I'm going to keep saying it, we actually have testing throughout the entire community. Our hospitals are testing, we have private labs that are testing, testing is done at Quest, LabCorp, all kinds of different locations throughout the community. It happens to be that the ones that the state has implemented that we have partnered with are the three that have gotten the most attention at this point, Salida and now Keys and Patterson. However, it's important for everyone to understand, testing is occurring throughout Stanislas County in a lot of different locations. At one point, we were even testing at one of our local HSA clinic sites and locations. So there is a lot of testing out there, and we're very pleased. You can see the ramp up with the volume of testing that's occurring right there. If you go back to the first tab of cases, Mary Ann, I want to point out the one item that has received the most criticism is how we have reported out on cities and so forth. And I will share with you, throughout this entire experience, we've continued to receive requests for additional data. And it is true that even when we report out through, by a city, then we receive requests to break down by their zip code or even by neighborhood and so forth. There was a point in time where by reporting those particular breakdowns of zip code particularly, we did not have enough tests or cases that it would even show much whatsoever by zip code. We now have a significant portion there, so our team has been working on a zip code display, and we hope to have that up on this website by the end of this week. So you'll be able to click on either the city view or the zip code view. And in this case, we have not just the incorporated cities, but we have unincorporated board supervisor districts with a map to let people know. So if you're in the unincorporated area, you can have a concept of it right now, but hopefully, we have zip code information up there by the end of this week. But I will share with you and everyone who's watching this presentation, even with those developments, we still receive requests from individuals saying, "It's not enough." And I think there's a lot of anxiety and concern in the community that drives some of these requests, particularly around testing locations. And I want to reiterate what we've said publicly many times, we do not believe that testing, test locations are a threat to the public health of the surrounding community in which they're placed. We actually want as many testing locations as we can have in this community, and it is a central part of us moving forward in our emergency response, and you're going to hear more of that from Dr. Washen-Pine here. So Mary Ann, I'm going to ask you if we could click on our long-term model here. And so if you go on the website and you click just below the statistics tab, you're going to get this chart, and this chart is as transparent as we can be with our community in displaying the four different COVID emergency response models that we've been able to utilize. And instead of just picking one, we display all of them, because many of them have very, very different results. And so you see the four different colored lines that go off to the right. One of them is cut off, I think about 60 days out or 30 days out or something, because that particular model has changed itself and decided that they don't, they don't have confidence beyond that level of date, so they just cut it off. But we thought, well, we could either take them off or continue to show it, so we're just going to continue to show it. And in this case, you can see that the two models at the bottom are tracking a very, very flat line with minimal hospitalizations in Stanislas County, and then we have kind of a medium impact, and then we have a greater impact. The green line that has the greater impact is the Basient model. I would like you to at least know that that model is being updated in the next couple of days as well. We update the public display once per week, but I would expect that green line to come down quite a bit when they recognize the actual numbers, which are the black boxes at the bottom, and that represents COVID-positive hospitalizations in Stanislas County during this period of time. This model was developed and displayed thinking that we were going to see these curves go up, but it's actually, they've stayed so low that it's hard to even see the scale of what's on the screen there. But what's important in this model are the two horizontal lines, the total hospital beds and the available hospital capacity for COVID patients. The entire premise of our work and our efforts at the very start of this emergency response was to ensure that we had hospital resources for sick patients when they arrive. And that is what our primary focus was in the very beginning of this and remained at the very top of our list. And by this display, you can see that we have achieved that easily in our community. It's there. There's significant capacity for hospitalizations. We do not want the trend to go up. We do not want our actual numbers to go up and even get near any of those horizontal lines. So our efforts now are to try to maintain this positive trend and to see what we can do in balancing the social distancing parameters and guidelines in our community with the actual numbers that you'll see on the screen. So Mary Ann, thank you very much for showing those. I wanted to make sure that the public saw what was out there. This is where the conversation starts and ends every time we discuss these matters, so I thought it was appropriate that we started here as well. I do want to mention that we have continued to have some challenges in working with the state in this emergency response, although we are pleased to see that some control is going to be pushed back to the local level. So for those of you who saw yesterday's Governor's News Conference, he did state that at some point here soon, we're going to receive an updated state order that then allows the local public health officer to work to form a plan that the Board of Supervisors adopts, and that that will be the guiding process going forward for how we reopen the economy and reopen businesses in Stanislas County. So that's an important development for us, but I also want to highlight another example of where we've really struggled in working with the state. Last week, the governor announced a new meal, a new program for senior meals. We literally heard about it at the same time that everyone else did. We do have a department, the Area Agency on Aging, they work very, very hard to support seniors in our community. A large part of our emergency response has been on ensuring that the seniors in our community and those most vulnerable have what they need to shelter in place. And in this case, the governor announced a new program that would provide restaurant meals to seniors and did not give us any kind of advance notice, didn't provide us the opportunity to weigh in on how could this program work locally. And then when we got into the details of it, it did not appear to be as promised or promoted from the very beginning in terms of how it could work in the local community. So we understand and we appreciate the creativity for how we serve the public in these kinds of emergency responses. However, this was one case that actually, we received so many inquiries that it took away from our ability to respond to the actual emergency, because we were very tied up trying to answer phone calls, emails, concerns, questions from restaurants, from seniors, and everyone inundating us with a program that was perceived to be starting within the next 24 hours. People could call in and have restaurant meals. It was a much, much more complex matter than that, and ultimately, how it impacts your local community really, really varied. In this case, I think earlier this week or yesterday, I think we heard that only two of the 58 counties wound up pursuing this program with a deadline of yesterday. I don't know if those numbers are still true or not. I have no independent confirmation of that, but it is an example of where we could benefit from more collaboration between state and local prior to making announcements like that, because we're trying to serve the public. The one positive out of this is that we had a lot of seniors contact us that previously were not signed up for some of our current programs, and by contacting us, we signed them up. So that was a good thing, and I do want to acknowledge that. There were some folks out there that could benefit from county services that had previously not taken advantage of that, so that was positive. I'm going to, in just a couple of minutes, I'm going to pass this over to Dr. Washen-Pine to take it over from here, but before I do that, I wanted to talk specifically about the Turlock Nursing and Rehabilitation Center. And I want to acknowledge that this has been, throughout our entire emergency response, the most challenging period of time for us in these leadership roles to navigate and to work on. And that's for a number of reasons, but the primary reason, and a very human reason, is that we've had a lot of tragedy in this. We've had, I think by last count, my last check, we had eight individuals who have passed away related to COVID-19 that were connected to this particular location. I do want the public to know that there was quite a bit of effort and planning in advance of how to support and work with skilled nursing facilities. And despite all of those best efforts, we still have this threat of an outbreak that can occur in any one of our skilled nursing facilities. We have a whole lot of locations in Stanislas County that are congregate living facilities and locations where this type of a scenario could occur. There are a lot of them out there, and they're very much at the top of our mind. We have an entire branch of our emergency response that's dedicated to supporting that population and that group that is at risk in our community. So I wanted to make sure I highlight that, that it remains a risk. And even as we go through the summer here, and we can show these charts, and hopefully these charts stay low and so forth, that risk will remain. And until there's a vaccine in place widely distributed, you know, potentially a year or so from now, you can pick any expert to tell you when a vaccine's going to show up, but it's a long ways out. That population will remain at severe risk, not just in our community, but throughout our country. So it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we have all the rules in place, that the operators of these facilities, which are almost entirely private operators, are well-supported, that they have all the tools that they need, they have all the policy procedures, that if they're, if they have any gaps in their operational plans, that we come in quickly and fill those gaps, and that we support those populations. I think that's going to continue to be very, very hard for our community. If you do not know anyone personally who has been impacted by the loss in Turlock, someday you may wind up, you know, knowing individuals, and it wouldn't surprise me at all if everyone in this room, by the time this emergency is done, has been touched in a very personal way by the types of impacts that have occurred in this type of facility. So I mention that because I want to pay respect to the individuals and families that have been impacted, not just in Turlock, but throughout our entire community. We do not speak of them as individuals and get to tell you their stories and so forth, but they're all someone, and they all had families, and they're all torn apart as a result of this process. And I think it's important for everyone to know that as individuals and leaders working on the emergency response, we very much care about that, and it really does matter to us. So we're going to be talking this week about what efforts have been put in place to reopen portions of our economy. But I think it's, I just want to remind everybody that that is balanced with the reality that we're facing, and those of us who are closest to this response are seeing this on a daily basis. So this is very much a balancing act, and it is very much guided by the results on our, on the ground level in Stanislas County and the actual impacts to our community. So with that said, I want to share with you that we have been working for some time to develop some reopening strategies for Stanislas County, and as I said, they've been slightly modified based on what we heard from the governor's office yesterday. And I can already sense, and I'm already receiving feedback, that the work that we've done, we're going to have people who are unhappy in our community. And this has been, you know, just one of the more fascinating public policy issues, because we have people who are equally passionate on each side of this issue, and unhappy that we're moving too fast and maybe putting the community at risk, and unhappy that we're not doing enough and that we need to move faster. And I hear from both, and I want to acknowledge that. And I also want to acknowledge that those feelings on either side, they're not wrong. You can look at this data and you can form an opinion on either side of that, and I respect that and understand it. But nonetheless, we feel like we're moving forward with a balanced approach in our community. What you're going to hear today is that we're taking some initial steps in the current week, by the end of this week, to do some changes in Stanislas County. However, the real change, I think the bigger changes for our community are going to be by next week. And what we're going to do is come back to the Board of Supervisors next Tuesday, so as you go through the presentation from Dr. Washen-Pine, I just want you to be keeping in mind, if there's something that you're not seeing in this presentation this week, it's likely going to be included in our presentation next Tuesday before the Board of Supervisors, and we'll talk a little bit more about that before we finish today's presentation. So I'm going to go ahead and stop talking now, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Washen-Pine, our most valuable player throughout this process, and she has some slides to go over with you, and also is obviously here for your questions.
Okay. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Chairwoman Olson, supervisors, and CEO and county council. Thank you for inviting me here today. So I'm going to start with some data, and I'll just go right on into it. So some of the data that we look at, that is a little bit, it's a little bit more of a time series here, is our cases. These are cases of confirmed cases, confirmed infection by date of symptom onset. And we like using symptom onset. It's not always available. We have tested people without symptoms, so clearly, they don't have a symptom onset. But we like using symptom onset, because you can't, it's a better measure of infection in the community. Some people will go in and get tested the first day they have symptoms, some people will wait a week and then go get tested. The lab turnaround time is not reliable. It's much better now, but I mean, it can be one day, it can be six hours, it can be three days. And so really, if we want to look at spread at the most real time that we can in our community, we like to look at cases by date of symptom onset. We give it a couple of weeks, so you see that 90% reporting. We give it about 14 days to make sure that we think it's pretty complete, then, you know, to take into account people, because we won't know their symptom onset until we get their test results, know they're positive, and then we come back and find their symptom onset. So we look at these data, and we see this cases by symptom onset. But this is all cases, and another problem that we run into is that people don't necessarily go get tested, right? Some people will, some people won't. Even if we had all the tests in the world, everybody doesn't go in and get tested when they get sick. They're like, oh, I'll wait a couple of days, and it goes away, and then you don't, you don't bother. So a more reliable way to look at this is hospitalized, because we know a certain proportion of people, it's pretty consistent, are going to be hospitalized. And so if we really look at hospital, people who are hospitalized by date of symptom onset, we've taken a lot of the variability in who gets tested out, because we're getting pretty thorough testing in our hospitals. We aren't really going to be missing much. It's way too important to miss it in a hospital. And so here is what we see hospitalized by date of symptom onset, and you could see that the largest, end of March, beginning of April was probably our peak, and then we have a little bit of a peak at the end. Well, that's due to the skilled nursing facility that had hospitalization. So if we take out patients from the skilled nursing facility and really look at our symptom onset by, for our hospitalized patients, I think it's pretty clear that we had our peak in late March, early April, and we've just been seeing consistent, low rates of hospitalization since then. And this is, the reason I want to look at it this way is not to deprioritize or in any way talk about skilled nursing facility like it didn't exist, but what I'm trying to look at is community transmission of this virus. And so the transmission that takes place within a facility isn't really representative of community transmission. So this is the graph that we really look at to see community transmission. And there's a couple other ways we can look at it. I've got a whole bunch of stuff to show, and I could show more, but I tried to pick the most important things. So we have what we call syndromic surveillance, and we have a system, and all five of our hospitals, it can be a little messy, all five of our hospitals submit their emergency department data about their chief complaint. And their chief complaint, if they say, "I have a cough," they say, "I have a fever," that gets put into the record, and it comes into the system, and then we get to see it and graph it usually within 24 hours. So it's really a more up-to-date, gets only people that come to the emergency department, but can really help us as we move through this. So you can see this starts at the beginning of February, still flu season, you know, you're seeing a lot of people come in with cough, maybe peaking around mid-March, you can see the number of people that visited every day, that's a daily visit, 140, and then you can see that it's tailed off, and we haven't been seeing a lot of people going to the emergency department for a cough. So here is the same graph for a fever. You know, we were seeing 80 to 100-plus a day for a fever, and that's down to now maybe 20 going into the emergency departments throughout our county. All five hospitals report in with a fever. Same for influenza-like illness. So influenza-like illness is a cough and fever, so it kind of gets the other two in, but it does have a specific category to pull. So you can see that we seem to have stabilized and be consistently down at a lower level for at least a couple of weeks relatively, the entire month of April almost. And then here's respiratory, and this is looking at all ages together. We can separate it up by ages. You can separate it out many different ways, but I just pulled this. And so respiratory, it can include shortness of breath, any respiratory complaints. It's a big syndrome that they take a bunch of different complaints and put them all in there. So you can see how we've really stabilized, I would have to say, for most of the month of April. So these are some of the data that I'm looking at as we're seeing what it looks like for spread in our community, what we're seeing of activity in our community, and it's, I think it's a pretty good and consistent measure. Hospital bed availability, this is, you saw this on the website, so I don't have to spend a lot of time with this, but we do look at our hospital bed daily counts and ensure that we aren't all of a sudden seeing an increase in hospital bed use. And then percent positive tests. So percent positive test is actually another graph that we like to look at during flu season. It's always in flu reports. And what we look at is for all the coronavirus tests, what's the percent that are positive? And this really does, is a good marker of transmission. We found that out with flu. It's going to be a good marker here, and they want to keep it below 10%. 10% is kind of the measure we shoot for. So you can see again, late March, probably peaked right there on 12%. A little hard to tell, because that was when testing was a little bit more in short supply, and a lot of testing was being done through the hospitals. Well, that's a higher risk and more likely to be positive when you're choosing people that way. So as we've seen, our testing sites get up, though, you see, we've stayed pretty stable for quite a few weeks on our percent positive tests. So we run, it was on the website, I think it said 6.4%, so we're running just around 6% of all the tests that are positive. So I get a lot of questions, why do we have so many negative tests? Well, we're running about 6% positive, so if every 100 being tested, you know, 94 will be negative, 6 will be positive. So that's, it stayed pretty consistent for the last few weeks. So the state set out these six criteria, the six indicators, criteria, there's a lot of different names, we can call them. So these are the six, and I'm going to go through them one by one. Some of them get divided up, so as I go through, we'll talk about them. So the first criteria talks about testing, for one. Get the ability for us to be able to test widely enough to be able to find out where the spread is. Just make sure we know when we're seeing an increase in cases early on. We have to have good testing to be able to do that. So we have the one site in Salida that's up to 200 people a day. We have these two OptumServe sites that are up to 132 each a day, so that's 464 capacity right there. We're getting very close to being able to test 1% of our population every day. population every day, which is really the goal that we have. And then we have many provider-based testing sites. So they're testing their patients who are coming in and our hospitals as well. So it, we, our testing capacity has expanded to the point where we are, we are testing at least one, we have the capacity to test at least 1% of our population per day. To go along with that, we're expanding our criteria. So we had pretty narrow criteria when we didn't have a lot of tests. So now we're, we're saying anybody who's symptomatic, anyone who has symptoms, cough, fever, all those symptoms that are on the CDC website, go in and get tested so we can know. And we're going to talk a little bit, well, probably on the next slide, of why that's so important. So contact tracing, that's, this is where this come in. So we're working to increase our contact tracing staff and our criteria is we want to be able to have a test come back positive and be able to trace all the contacts within the first 24 hours. And you're going to get more information from that later. But really, the whole point is, is that to be able to open up, we can't stay at home for the next year or two waiting for a vaccine or some herd immunity to develop. We have to, we, we just can't stay at home that long. You can't do it. And the way you can safely do it is to start getting, finding the people who are infected quickly, putting them in isolation, finding their contacts, getting them tested if they're symptomatic, placing them in quarantine for their 14 days and we're hoping to have actually systems so they don't have to stay home that whole 14 days, which involves more testing eventually. And then, and then in that way, we manage to contain the virus so it's not spreading unchecked. And then we can safely return to work. I think a lot of people, and Jody talked about it a little bit, a lot of people think that we need to keep no cases. And that, the goal of this isn't really not to have any infections. The goal is to control how fast it spreads and be able to not have it spread faster than our resources allow. So our hospital surge capacity, our other resources. But we do, you know, everybody wants a vaccine. I hope we get a vaccine. There's many viruses we've never been able to develop a vaccine for. So while they're putting every effort into getting a vaccine, the other thing we have to do is we have to get enough people infected and develop our herd immunity at the same time in the slowest and safest manner. And that involves protecting our most vulnerable population during this time. So as we go through our plan, and I'm getting a little ahead of us, but as we go through our plan, you'll see that throughout the plan, the people who are over 65, which is the biggest risk, risk for severe disease and death increases with age, and it's just a large risk. And until we have the ability to protect them in better ways like treatment or vaccine, they are going to have to stay away from others that would give them an increased chance of infection. They really just have to be very, very careful with their activities. And it's, it's, it's hard, I know. But that's the way we're going to be able to safely reopen and move forward while we try to contain the spread of this infection. Supporting those in isolation and quarantine is very important. We have to make sure that, you know, people go into isolation, they, they're sick. Isolation is for people who are ill and can spread the disease. Quarantine is for people who have been exposed and are not yet ill, but are at high risk for becoming ill. You know, that's how it spreads. So we need to make sure that if they are staying at home and away from others, they have their needs met. We can't make them stay home when they have no food in the house. I mean, you, you just have to make sure that they are able to stay home and don't have to leave to get their essential needs met. So we have to prevent infections for those at increased risk. And I talked a bit about those who are home, but we also have congregate living settings for people who are primarily, what we're talking about here is people over age 65 because again, age is the largest risk factor. So we are working with all of our congregate living for people who are older and trying to ensure that there, there are policies and procedures and activities in place to ensure that the chance for the virus to get into the facility is minimized as much as we can. You cannot eliminate it because there's the asymptomatic. I mean, you just don't know who has disease right now. So people can have, be infected and have absolutely no symptoms or be in the days before they develop symptoms, so still have no symptoms and still be working there. They can also visit. Our visitation is very, very much limited for our congregate living, but end of life is allowed. You have to allow that. So there are people who are going to be coming in. And so how can we make it as safe as we possibly can for them to continue to come in? So that's, that's basically what we're working with. And then we need to work with other congregate settings, including homeless shelters. And there's been work done with them. Face covering is given to them. Moving out, high risk out of the congregate living into the, into the motels so that they can, they're not at risk of, of becoming infected if the virus gets in there again with the same way it can get in. Respond to healthcare surge. I think you've seen some of the graphs we're looking at. So we're tracking of the things that are needed. Bed availability is very important. PPE, our personal protective equipment, is also incredibly important. It's probably the thing that we've been really waiting the most to get there. We're still in our constrained PPE response right now, but it is improving. So hopefully, the masks are getting better. We're hoping to get some gowns going because gowns have been a big, big shortage. And if our beds get full, we do have our alternate care site that is stood up and ready. We meet with our hospitals weekly for the CEOs meeting. And then there's another meeting that goes with them three times a week with our staff. So we have a lot of coordination with all our hospitals. We also have a skilled nursing facility and other congregate living calls that happen multiple times a week as well. So we have a lot of, a lot of different activities that are ongoing to continue to coordinate our response. So ensure that, that the, the fourth one, I think it is, is ensure treatment is available when developed. It's, it's, the statewide measure is to, to support the development of treatment, but that's recognized not to be a county. So what we're required to do to meet this is to commit to ensuring that the treatment is available when treatment becomes available. So I have full commitment to make that available and so we've fully met that criteria. Criteria five is one we're going to hear a little bit more about. I know Keith's going to come up and talk about this. Ensure our businesses, schools, and childcare facilities can safely reopen. And we're talking about decreasing risk, making them as risk-free and as safe as we can make them. And it's not, nothing will be no risk, but it's going to be decreased risk. So we are working with many, many different people in developing these safe reopening guidelines. And you're going to hear a little bit more about that. And then the last criteria is our surveillance. We need to be able to watch what's going on. And I showed you some of the surveillance we're looking at. We have the first watch also, which is all EMS calls, Essence, which you just saw, our emergency department chief complaint data, hospital bed availability, our percent positive tests I showed, looking at the dates of symptom onset for all those hospitalized, which I showed you. These are the things that we're looking at for our surveillance system. And then we're working to send up absentee reporting from various sectors. Schools are always a great source of this, but schools aren't meeting in person right now. So getting absenteeism from them right now doesn't work. We know this works very well in flu season. It doesn't matter what their absent front, it always tracks with flu season. So we know that's probably going to be true for many other sectors. And so we're working to set that up. And it, it's a good marker because then that gets, you know, not everybody goes and gets tested, not everybody sees their doctor. So it'll be a, it's a good marker of illness in the community. So we're working to set that up. So those are the six criteria the state have set up and those are the actions that we have taken. So with the governor's announcement yesterday, we, we, we are ready. You've seen the data. So amended public health order, we're planning to post either today or tomorrow, which will include the curbside pickup for retail as in the governor's order. We are going to include pet grooming. Now, I've said dogs only. I actually don't know if other animals go. I mean, I don't know if people bring their cats to get nails clipped or anything, but cats clearly get this virus, can get this virus. It seems pretty clear they can get it from people. Whether cats can give it to people, I can't tell you. I don't think those data are anywhere around. But for now, we're going to limit this to dogs only as the, dogs do not, have not gotten sick with this coronavirus yet. They have their own coronavirus, but this coronavirus, no. And then the other one is drive-in movies. So we have had some requests from some places to set up, you know, drive-in movie where people can drive in, they'll put on a movie, you can't get out of your car. There will be no bathrooms, there will be no snacks being sold. To start out with, we have to be very careful. Mask gatherings, we just, it's just too much of a risk yet until we can, can get a little bit more containment on the virus. We were recently reported, a, a gathering that was quite large, about 50 people, where we now have nine ill and 40 under quarantine. So I have to tell you that it's, it's not safe yet to mass gather, but if we stay apart from each other and we just drive in to our, in a car and we bring everything we need and we drive out if we need to get out of our car, it can safely move forward and give people a few things to do on the weekends or weeknights or, you know, whenever they put these up. So we're setting up a process where that, you submit a plan and we need to know about it and we need to make sure it goes well. If it doesn't go well, then we'll have to stop them because we're not going to have outbreaks from drive-in movies. But it just, I, I think it's great. Everybody just has to do their part. It's still, the virus is still here. It's still going to continue to be here. And we need to open things in a safe manner. And I think most people are really getting this and, and I think we're going to be able to move forward safely. And then the last thing is graduations. That's really hard because those are mass gatherings. So we're working, we've been working with the Stanislaus County Office of Ed to come up with some good guidelines on how we can do this. This is really hard because we really can't have mass gatherings right now. And, and so we're going to get some guidelines together. We're hoping that by the time summer gets into full swing, we'll be able to move perhaps into the next phase and, and we can have a little bit larger gatherings because it's not going to be much fun if we limit the gatherings to 20 people. And, you know, that's, how many, how many can you graduate without and have parents there? I mean, that's, that would take like weeks for some schools. So it, it's, it's not terribly feasible right now. We're trying to find a way that we feel like we can do graduations in a safe manner so that we don't have spread and outbreaks from graduations. We just don't want people dying from having gone to an out, a graduation. It's, it's, it's sadly just still a risk right now. So I think that's the end of what I have. And then I was going to turn it back over to you for the looking forward.
Thank you. So I have just a couple of comments and then we're going to open up for questions. I, I really appreciate the, the thorough review of the data that goes into the analysis. So yes, we put a lot on our dashboard, but you can see there's also a lot of underlying surveillance data, data that the public health team, including public health officer, look at frequently. And that helps advise us on opportunities in our local community. And I appreciate the criteria and an evaluation of our criteria. There's six criteria set out by the state. Last week, we built a dashboard for those six criteria telling us where are we at? Yellow, red, green. Are we in good shape? Where are we at? So you're going to be seeing that going forward. We've been, I, I think, working within this framework now for several weeks and that work has served us really well because once the state took action this week or plans to, we fit right into that. We do have some very key issues and I just want to acknowledge them. These are the items that we get the frequent contacts about. They include hair salons, dine-in restaurants, and gyms. Those are the ones that we get the most. And that's not an inclusive list, so there are others that are out there. But I can tell you that those are the, those are the big ones. So that by next week, as we bring a plan to the Board of Supervisors, we at least want to be able to comment on when we think they will fit into this broader response over time. And whether we're near those or if they're still far out, what do those look like? And what are the, what are the types of, of protections that will need to be in place for us to move forward on any of those topics? The next thing I want to do is, I want to invite Keith up to preview a program that we call Good to Go. I'm very, very proud of the entire effort that's been put forward in, in packaging this. I think I called Keith probably a week and a half ago, not more than two weeks ago, and just said, we need an entire branch of the emergency response dedicated to supporting the business community. And it was not just to help the business community operate safely today, given the current public health order, but let's prepare for what the next phase is going to look like. And I've learned over time that there were a few communities that did something similar, but not many. We're actually ahead of the curve in terms of partnership with the local business community to form concrete plans so that when the orders are relaxed, we can move forward with confidence because we've already built through the stakeholder input, what is this process going to look like in Stanislaus County. So I at least wanted Keith to share a few words about that. And then before he's done, I'm going to thank a couple of people that were key in that effort.
Thank you, sir. Chairwoman Olson, members of the board, CEO Hayes, Mr. Posey, how are you this morning? Keith Boggs. So you will be seeing a document that looks something like this over the course of the next few days. And I'm not prepared to share it this morning because it still yet, it needs to be vetted one more time with our public health officer. And Julie's been through this, Dr. Vee's been through this a couple of times already and has been very patient with me and with our chairwoman as we try to make progress. I will mention that Mr. Hayes did ask us to ramp something up and that was as early as April 7. It actually has been paralleling our micro grant program. So there's been a lot of energy behind the curtain over the last few weeks, ramping this stuff up. So Good to Go strategy is a recommendation to safely reopen our economy. It will be a phased approach. There were 21 business leaders that came together to help form this and they represented everything from real estate to restaurants and just about everything in between. They met only virtually. There was no meetings, there were no face-to-face. There were three phone conversations focusing on 17 primary business subsectors. And as you start to look through the document, you'll recognize things like gymnasiums and, and entertainment venues that are obviously a phase three or a farther out process, but they're all there in those 17 primary subsectors. From there, we developed a template, a simple template approach, knowing that Dr. Vee would have to review those and we'd all have to commit them to memory. So there is a, a, a form and a figure to the process. The template has three primary sections, a best practices for that business, whatever the template's about, be it large box, big box, retail, or pet grooming or what have you. And then it has a section on best practices for customer health and safety as well as employee health and safety. Each one of those 17 areas were assigned a business sector champion. And in most instances, it was someone who came from that sector. So Evan Porges did the, the template on car washes. And he's an entrepreneur that has a background. So that sort of stuff was, was how we, we did this. Those champions reached out to trade affiliations, many of them, real estate, restaurants, associations. They have some pretty robust recommendations on how to come back in phases. So that was all compiled into the effort as well, all to make sure that our community is ready to reopen and prepared to bounce back. That's really what this is all about. A huge kudo to Dave White and Opportunity Stanislaus for providing the staff support to build the document. And then finally, the next step, once we get to a place where we're comfortable locally, you're comfortable as leadership, and we start to roll these out in phases, the next step will be to prepare an online training component for local business with a marketing effort that will come behind it so that a placard will be in your window that says you're good to go. You're good to go because you went through this rigorous training. You're adhering to social distancing. You recognize the 250 square feet per person, be you in 1,000 square feet or at Costco and you're looped around the block. And that, that customer, consumer confidence comes back along with the rollout. So anyway, that's where we are at this hour and we're excited about it. Very, very proud of these 20, 20 other people that helped to, to build this. And I can take any questions.
So we're going to share this out at next week's board meeting. You're going to see this and we'll put the final touches on it as, as Keith mentioned. And I'm, I'm not going to let him step away without personally thanking him for leading this effort along with his entire team, some of which are in the room with us, but many just watching on the screen. I also want to thank Dave White, as you mentioned, with Opportunity Stanislaus. His team was very instrumental in this process, working forward. And we are going to, want to thank the entire list of community participants, but I'll just mention Rob Sauer from PMZ Commercial Real Estate played a big role in putting this together. And we thank him very, very much for that effort. So when we roll this out next week, we'll try to get you that entire list of participants. That concludes our presentation this morning. You have myself, Keith, Dr. Waishen Pine, and others here to answer any questions on our emergency response.
Thank you for the very thorough presentation. Before we move to questions and comments, I have a few comments myself. First, as we all saw, we really are making these decisions... decisions based on local data and medical science. The number of data points that Dr. Vee and Marianne Lilly and their teams are reviewing are just astounding and they've done a remarkable job. So thank you for leading with that. I also wanted to thank Dr. Vee, County Council Tom Bose, for their extremely hard work in bringing us to this day and throughout the whole crisis so far. But so much work goes into these reopening plans, goes into the public health orders. So we owe you a tremendous amount of gratitude for the amount of hours and days that you have spent on this. And then in regards to the Good to Go Plan and the details behind the protocols, the, uh, safety sanitation protocols, social distancing protocols that are going into a safe reopening plan of our economy, kudos to Keith Boggs, Dave White, Rob Souser, and the 21 business leaders who have worked so hard in providing us and Dr. Vee's team with detailed information on how our local businesses and activities can safely begin a reopening strategy so that people can get back to work and so that people can start to provide economically for their, themselves and their families once again. Uh, we all owe you an incredible debt of gratitude for volunteering your time to make sure that we're prepared in safe ways to be able to move forward. Uh, as County CEO Jody Hayes said, "Our intention is to bring a more comprehensive plan to the board next week, next Tuesday, with the goal of being able to reopen additional businesses, not all most likely, but some additional businesses on or before May 18th." That's the goal we have in mind. Again, constantly informed by what our local data and medical science warrant as appropriate at that time. We know, um, many people today are probably really pleased to see that we're moving forward and beginning the initial steps toward a reopening of our economy. But we also know that a lot of people today are probably disappointed. Some were hoping that we would be able to announce more reopenings. Some are very concerned that we're opening at all. And as County CEO said, "We understand your viewpoints. There is validity on both sides." And, um, "We are doing the best we can to make smart, safe decisions as it relates to restarting businesses and activities once again in our community." So with that, uh, again, our gratitude to everybody who has worked so hard to get us to this day and keeping our community safe and healthy. And I will ask for any questions or comments from my colleagues. Supervisor Keyes?
I'm prepared. Okay. So on the, the ventilators, the PPE, the beds, the, all the goals that we have to make, we have to have sufficient. Is this coming out of the governor's order? Are we utilizing the surge plan, the initial surge plan, uh, when we col- collect those data points? And if you don't know, say, "I don't know" or...
So, um, all of it. So, um, sufficient ventilators, I think, you know, it's going to depend on how much, we have the ventilators we have. So it's going to depend on how fast the disease spreads. And, and what we're trying to do really is open up really slowly. Um, I know people are impatient and I get that, believe me. I, I'd love to have my haircut too. Um, not do it myself. But, um, i- i- it, wh- what I think that one of the worst things we could do is open too fast and then have to cut it back down again and close them up. And so a slower reopening and watching the surge in the hospital and watching all of our markers and knowing when we can move forward more and knowing when we have to just stay where we are and hopefully not have to pull back is really important. So will we get more ventilators? I mean, it's all the plans is what it is. Um, sufficient PPE was one of the measures and I think you brought that up. Um, what we want right now is a 30-day supply. So that's what we call sufficient because that's going to be enough to surge and hopefully you can get it in. But the supply chain is opening up and so I'm hoping that that's going to disappear as a, as a, um, requirement su- um, soon, not soon, but someday, um, as, as the supply chain gets better. So, did that answer all of the question?
Yeah. I, I think that, because the, the data points are, we've been, we've been tracking data points, but yet the, there hasn't been a, uh, proclamation by the governor saying that, that we need 60-day supply or we need a 30-day supply. So I'm glad we're tracking and that seems like a, a pretty big number. I see the, the 46% of the beds are being utilized. That doesn't seem like a very good model for the hospitals. They must be bleeding, you know, probably long-term. Uh, this is going to have a detrimental effect on them. Uh, as far as the modeling, uh, the actual models that we're tracking on the numbers, are we still utilizing the 40% social distancing in our model?
So, yes. And, and, um, so as we open up a bit and increase our mixing, we will probably see more infections. So that's not yet modeled in there. So yes, that's all it, with the 40% mixing. 40% decrease in, in social distancing.
And, and that came originally from the, the Google tracking, right? Uh, are we actually maintaining that?
We seem to be. If you look at our, if you look at our data, we do seem to be, I'm, it's the, these data. So there's Google tracking, there's Cubic, there's, uh, Unicast, there's a whole bunch of different ones. Um, they're going to differ by area because in a more urban area, people are more able to stay home. In a more rural or agricultural area, m- many of us, many people are involved in that essential, critical infrastructure and you're going to see, um, a less decrease than you see in other areas. So if you look at some of these, it doesn't look like we did very well. And yet, I, I know we did because you see the, you see the, um, evidence in the disease transmission. So it's really hard to judge and compare across very, very different communities.
Uh, so this is a two-part question. And I, I already had the answer because I, I called, uh, Marianne Lee one day and she gave me a good dissertation on, uh, but you can explain to the public why we don't test healthy people, uh, the first part. And then the second part of the question is asymptomatic. So a lot of people are asymptomatic. Are they truly asymptomatic where they have no issue? Or is it what you were talking about where they just don't feel good for a couple of days and they decide they've gotten a little better so they're not going to go get tested?
Okay. So, I'm not good at two-part questions, but, um, healthy people. Um, so if you test someone with no symptoms, it's a point in time. I can't tell you that you're not going to be positive in three days. So it, it might give you a good feeling right now, but if you're still feeling well in three days, I don't know what that means. So it's really hard to test healthy people and interpret what that po- that negative test means. I mean, it's good right now, I would say, but it doesn't predict what you're going to be, um, in the next day or two, um, or three, or, you know, next week. So it's not hopeful, really, to me, um, for any long-term knowledge. Um, so that's why we, in general, don't test healthy, healthy, non-exposed people. Um, there's a little bit different. So when there's an outbreak in a facility, we test everybody whether they have symptoms or not. Because, because now we're trying to stop an outbreak in a confined space, if, if you will, and a certain number of people. And you have to know who's infected and who's not to separate them out and, and stop transmission. So then you're going to test everybody because you need to find those people who are asymptomatic and they're more likely to be positive because we know they've been exposed. So, um, that's, that's that part of it. So otherwise, people running around like you, me, I mean, if we have no symptoms, I mean, it, it'll tell you something for now. It doesn't really tell you something that's helpful in a day or two. So, um, there, there are certain circumstances you might want to do it, but, you know, for the ma- vast majority of the population, it's not necessary. And then, is, move on?
Yep.
Okay. Um, so truly asymptomatic. It appears that there is truly asymptomatic. Um, what proportion is asymptomatic? I think it, it may vary with age. It may vary with many things. Um, so I don't know that they really know that yet. Uh, a lot of people, like, uh, when it first came out of, um, the Seattle King County area with the skilled nursing facility, um, the people who were asymptomatic did, uh, many of them developed symptoms over the next couple of days. So that's what we called the pre-symptomatic. Um, but not everybody did. And I think it was, I've seen 18%. I've seen other numbers. So there does seem to be a certain proportion that are truly asymptomatic. But sometimes it's just like, "Oh, you know, I feel a little tired today" or "I feel a little achy today. Maybe I, you know, did something yesterday." And that, you know, so it's, that's a symptom. Um, but not recognized as being a potentially bad transmission symptom. So, yeah.
Okay. If we had, uh, if we were able to test 1%, which is our goal, and you had extra tests, would you ever do random in congregate settings as even, uh, an option? Or doing some asymptomatic people?
Yes. So what we're doing now is trying to ensure that all the symptomatic people have been tested within 24 hours and are, are isolated or kept apart until we know the results of their test, uh, in congregate settings. So starting there. So if anybody has a symptom that's consistent with this, let's get them tested within 24 hours. That's kind of our early detection and let's keep up this pace. Um, so in, um, congregate living, uh, and in, um, hospitals, because you really don't want your healthcare spreading, there is some role for testing of asymptomatic people. So we are going to do that. Um, and as we get more testing and more, um, capacity to test, uh, we will continue to expand who we test. So yes, that's coming. But we've, we, I think we've finally got the swabs solved, which is great. We can swab people now. But I'm concerned that we might start now really running short of reagents and, and various other things in the test process. So I think it's, again, like everything else, a slow, gradual start to our expansion and let's see how we do. And so that we keep the capacity to test, at least what we're doing now, and then expand when we know we have a good pipeline of stuff.
And so, well, last thing, that was on a CSAC call yesterday that was hastily put together, uh, right after the governor was done. And, and it's, what we know is that we don't know everything until we get the governor's direction on Thursday, day after tomorrow. And that, uh, again, leads back to why our chairwoman and why our CEO and why our public health officer are talking about next week. We'll have much better direction. The fact that we're loosening today is based on statistics and then we'll have the ability to, um, have some more direction for next week. So, and, and I don't know if I've told you how much I appreciate you, because people who have, um, you know, great power, it's very lonely at the top, making decisions. Know that you have a team around us. I'm, I've, I've told you before, I'm very supportive of what you're doing. And the only way when we start phasing in, we're going to need cooperation and preparedness, right? That's what we're doing right now, the preparedness, but we're going to need cooperation from the public. When we open, everyone has to continue to believe that you, that everyone around you has, uh, this virus. And, and so thus, it leads me to my last editorial comment is that I, I haven't understood the need for people to buy, by zip code or by city or by anything else. If everyone pretended like their, their neighbor was sick, we would all be better off, right? That's, and, and as we get more comfortable is when it becomes more dangerous, especially for those over 65. So keep that in mind, uh, as we go forward. I'm glad we're, we're shooting out all the data as it's available, as we're, we have the ability to do it. But again, pr- use caution around the most vulnerable people in, in our population and we'll be much better off.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Supervisor. Other questions or comments from the board? Supervisor DiMartini?
I just had a few questions. First of all, I want to say I do appreciate your hard work on this. And I think the county is very fortunate to have somebody with your experience and ability in this position right now. It's usually a position that we don't hear much from, but you're right out in the forefront right now. So I do appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Um, anyway, um, I was told by, uh, hospital administrator, I don't want to say which one, that the warm temperatures, you know, and the sunlight would decrease this virus. And I noticed from your chart, it's just been steadily going down as the weather is warming up. And this administrator told me this is typical of the flu. This was about two months ago that she told me that. So I wondered, uh, do you think that the warm temperatures and sunlight are, are causing a decrease in, in these? It's killing the virus sooner?
So, um, we don't have any data to support that really, but I do believe it. Um, but I might be living in hope because, you know, I would really like it to have that. But we know from the virus that we know that warmer temperatures kill the virus faster. So if we're talking about surfaces, the warmer it is, the less long they'll last. So as you go outside, i- if a surface gets contaminated, the virus does not live very long because the heat will, will get rid of it. And we are very fortunate to live in a very warm climate. So, um, as it continues to warm up, I really do think that any transmission that happens based on surfaces where the virus would deposit, um, w- will absolutely decrease. Uh, people tend to crowd less in the summer than, than in their homes, right? And, and increasing transmission there or in buildings and everywhere. So it, we usually see all of these respiratory viruses, they decrease in the summer. Um, you know, the flus, the, there's whole bunches of different ones and the seasonal coronaviruses that we usually see. So yes, they, they do do seasonal. Will, I don't expect it to go away, my opinion. Um, there's just, we're too susceptible of a population. So there's just too many people to infect and there's just too much virus around right now. I, but I think it will slow down. That means the fall though. We have to be very, very careful as we enter the fall because I do think it will pick right back up. We saw that in the 2009 pandemic. They saw that in the 1918 pandemic. I think you're going to see it because our, our, our people, our communities are still very susceptible to the virus. We have not built immunity yet.
Yeah. Um, I would think with the warm temperatures, you might be safer outside than inside, you know, the, but that was the reason why maybe the parks should be opened up pretty soon or so because the, seemed like the likelihood of, uh, of transmission would be a lot less outside than, say, inside of a, of a house.
Yeah. And I don't think it'll protect you from someone sneezing on you or coughing on you right outside, but, but I, more the surfaces, you know, if you sneeze on a car handle and, and it's going to die pretty quick if the car handle's up to 140 degrees or whatever in the height of summer, virus isn't going to live on that. So, yeah.
And it's in your, uh, com- I don't know if it was your comments earlier or whose, but they talked about curbside pickup for retail. And I just wonder just how you envision that. Because, you know, if you go into like Home Depot, there, there's, you know, full, there's no curbside pickup for that or hardware stores or Walmart or anything like that. But how do you see that working for something like, say, a sou- uh, shoe store or a clothing store, curbside pickup? It doesn't seem realistic to me. But I'm, I'm not sure what you mean by curbside pickup.
Yeah, it's really hard. Um, so we're hoping it'll model after the restaurants, um, where you order online and pick up. I get that shoes are going to be really hard. There are going to be many things I think that we have to work through. And stores, the retail industry needs to help us work through these because it's, this is a big industry. Bookstores, pretty easy. Toy stores, maybe easy. So I think there's some things that are easier to implement. Florists, pretty easy. Um, but some things are going to be very difficult to implement. And I think that's part of what, I don't know if Keith has any other opinions, but that's part of the difficulty of implementing this. We're trying to, the whole opening plan is based on trying to open up the things that have the briefest encounters and that you can stay the furthest away. And it's, it's not a lot of people interacting at the same time. So it's really trying to be the lowest possible risk activities. Um, yeah, i- I think it's going to be difficult for some. Um, I think there's, they, they'll find some interesting ways to, to make this work. I don't know if anybody else has any other thoughts, but I think it's...
Just a couple of, uh, quick thoughts. Um, this is going to be easier on other, some than others. Uh, and we've actually seen, uh, curbside pickup in, uh, many of the larger retail establishments. I, I know you mentioned Home Depot. They actually just implemented it this week at the Home Depot that I was at. So they took a whole portion of the parking lot and now they're curbside. You can come in and, and pick your items up, just order from home. Um, I do want to point out that, that we have support, uh, for businesses, uh, particularly small businesses that want to try to find a way to, um, make this change into an e-commerce environment. And we can help them. So we'll help them on an individual basis, try to be creative and think through, how can we get you to work within these parameters for the period of time that is necessary. And I just want to point that out for any members of the business community watching today's presentation. If you're struggling with this issue, call us. You can call our business branch. And the number you can call Monday through Friday is 211 and, and just ask to speak with the business branch and they will connect you. And we'll help you figure out a, figure out a creative plan.
Okay. The last thing I want to bring up is that, that the restriction on our rights, uh, especially at churches, you know, and the freedom of association. And, uh, this runs very contrary to our Bill of Rights. There, there's no phasing in of freedom of religion or freedom of association. And I just don't see the government has the authority to do this. I mean, somebody needs to take this thing to Supreme Court because in reading the Bill of Rights and their, "Freedom of Religion," you have, "Congress shall pass no law." And, um, you know, there's the same thing for freedom of association, at least peacefully. Uh, and government stepping into this, there is a real concern because, uh, if they could do it for this, then it can be done for, for some other reason down the road. And I just don't see that there, there is any exceptions to the Bill of Rights. I mean, do you, do you see something that I don't?
So, i- if you don't mind, I'm going to take that question. Um, Supervisor DiMartini, thank you for your question. Um, your sentiment, uh, has been echoed by many people in our community. Uh, it's a very, very difficult, uh, question. It's a legal question that, um, is predominantly, uh, lies at the state level, um, with the, with the governor, um, making very clear orders around this and us trying to understand and respect and work within the governor's order. While at the same time, I do want to acknowledge, in our community, um, we have had a tremendous partnership... um, we have had a tremendous partnership with our faith-based community, and they've worked with us on all kinds of aspects of strategies within Stanislaus County. So, uh, we are very fortunate to have a faith-based community that we've been able to partner with, work with, and um, and, and try to ensure that we respect their rights, while they're trying to also protect their congregations and their membership. Um, it's been very refreshing to see that we have faith-based leaders in Stanislaus County who are very concerned with the health of their congregations, and not wanting to do things that would put the health of their congregations in jeopardy. Um, however, with all of that said, they obviously um, uh, have uh, much concern with what you voiced. Um, and that is that they have uh, a freedom of religion, and a right to practice and associate, and this has certainly challenged that. So I don't mean to dodge your question, um, because I'm not going to make a legal opinion about, about uh, this particular matter that is going to, uh, someday happen in the courts, I would presume. Um, but for now, I want to acknowledge that in our community, um, our faith-based partners have worked really, really well with us. We appreciate them so much, and we're trying to do things creatively to help them pull together and maintain their community in a way that honors and respects um, their beliefs.
Uh, just to, just to comment on that, I, I believe this is really a federal issue, and not really state.
Okay.
Somebody needs to take this to the Supreme Court, because when it says Congress shall pass no law restricting the right of religion, I, the, the courts really need to look at this, because next year, it could be some other reason why we can't associate. I mean, I, I don't have a lot of confidence in the government, and uh, you know, the, their Bill of Rights was to protect us from tyranny. And we're really at borderline tyranny right now. In the pandemic that we had in nineteen eighteen, the Spanish flu was much worse than this. Many more people died, and there was no restrictions on religion at that time. Now, it's just, I don't expect you to do anything about it, but I, I think that somebody needs to take this thing to the Supreme Court and get a ruling on it soon.
Thank you, Supervisor DiMartini. Supervisor Barry Hill, do you have any comments or questions on this item? Thank you. Supervisor Kiasa.
Can I just ask a question of, of what, how we, um, uh, because you get a lot of pushback as to why, I think Supervisor DiMartini had, had said a little bit of it, of why Home Depot's open, and they're selling everything in the store, which might be furniture, appliances, then the appliance store can't. So how is it, I, I, I know that's one of the reasons we created the Small Business Program, to help the tru- truly small business, but we've got curbside versus um, the, I don't want to say it's free to go through Home Depot, and I hate to pick on Home Depot specifically, but just a large corporation. So, um, what do we tell those folks?
Well, that's a really hard one. Um, I would probably turn to Keith to ask him.
I, I could chime in, actually.
Okay.
This has actually been a, a, a real struggle for us, because that essential services list that, uh, that we all became very, very familiar with the second that it was added in the governor's order, um, that is a list that I think everybody knows now, um, maintained by FEMA. That was a se- that was developed in a wartime environment, is really how it was developed. It was not developed for a pandemic and so forth. So immediately, we saw some, some interesting nuances in that list that, that from our perspective flunked the logic test. Why is it that you could go to a big box retailer and purchase a TV, but you couldn't go to Best Buy and purchase a TV, or something like that? Or, and then, obviously, lots of local retailers are the ones that we were worried about. You know, local retailers who specialize in a particular thing, like, um, a local retailer that just sells clothing. They're not open, however, you can go to a large big box retailer where they do have clothing. And the, the, the simple answer to the question is, it's because those large retailers are providing essential services and goods that are required for people to maintain themselves at home, mainly the food supply and so forth, that we're all familiar with. Um, I actually, appliances is one that um, we have had some back and forth with, because I think there are clear provisions that, that um, support the appliance industry. But then you literally get into the um, uh, argument or distinction between, well, is a vacuum cleaner an appliance, or is it not an appliance? And so forth. And I will just tell you, I argued, no, they are appliances, you need to keep your house clean. So, um, you know, those are the kinds of conversations we've been in. Um, we try to default to trying to support the local community, um, uh, the best that we can. And I also want to thank all of our local retailers for uh, sticking with this program as long as they have been able to, and just trying to reach out for whatever resources allow them to survive. Uh, many other communities, the local um, business community has, has uh, just done their own thing, and, and, and really pushed the limit. And in our community, we've had very little of those kinds of examples. So we really owe it to the local retailers and the small business community for, for sticking with us as long as we have. And we, we try our best to answer your question. Uh, but ultimately, if you're not providing those essential services, such the food supply chain and so forth, um, then you have fallen out of those, uh, those services I, as identified by FEMA.
Supervisor Whitro.
Well, first, just thank all of you guys for, for all that you're doing here. This is, I don't think anybody realized how hard our staff is working to do this, and, and the, um, the heartfelt efforts that, that everybody's putting into this thing. And it's, we, we know how it's affecting the community, and, and I know how it's affecting our staff, and everybody that has to do every day, go in, go home at night, did I do enough? Did I do too much? You know, there's just no right, exactly right answer to any of this, we're making this up as we go. So I just want to thank everybody who, um, in the county, at the county level, that's doing all the hard work, that's putting the efforts in. And, and, and we know how we're all dealing with it in the community, but, but I want people to understand how hard it is at this level, too, and the same for the supervisors, you know, I, I know everybody is yielding these calls and these texts, and, and the emails, and the, or the people on the street that grab you and come up to you and say, you know, you know, what the hell are you doing? You know, it, it, it's, it's, it's what we're, it's what we're all dealing with right now, and I very much appreciate that. I've got a million different little notes here, so many different things that, that, um, that come up throughout the day. And, and I say, well, I'm going to, we're going to, we've got to talk about this. I look to, to my, my fellow supervisors, to our CEO and our, our public health director, you know, show up all the time, and, and, and as we all do, and ask these questions. Um, what are we doing, and how do we fix this? And I go back and forth constantly between, you know, what are we doing? We've got to open things back up, this is crazy, this is just not going to work. To, to back, we're, no, there's, look what's going on, we got to be careful, this could, this could really get out of control. And, and I think the public's in the same way, we've got about fifty percent of the people that say, we've got to open things up and just end this, and we've got fifty percent to say, no, we need to stay shut up for another six months. You know, it's just crazy, the different opinions that are out there on this thing. So, so we're all as, as, um, as in the positions of governance, trying to help make these decisions and find the, the best avenue to get us through this thing. Um, the, um, cer- certain, uh, and, and the business community, too, with what Keith's got going, too, as far as help trying to figure out how to get, get us back up and running. I very much appreciate everybody from the business community that's stepping up and trying to come up with these procedures for their good-to-go, to get that going. Um, but I think one of the things we need to just remember, just like anything in life, and we've talked about this before, I always talk about this, it, it's about balance, right? We've got to find that balance somewhere, that we can somehow get back to normal, um, without threatening, um, everybody's lives still to do this. You know, there's sectors out there, or they're just in panic. Um, and the, and the health sector is one of those sectors, as far as, um, financially, how are they going to survive this thing? And, and, and I keep going back to, we've got to look at, and I know that we are, but we've got to look at the backside of this. What's going to happen as a result of us trying to save all these lives? How many lives are going to be lost on the backside because of it? And again, it comes back to that balanced approach, to find, try to find that, that spot where we can get. I know on our, our, um, our mental health, um, in the area of mental health, I know our suicide hotline is going through the roof. Um, I know we've got an unbelievable amount of calls happen there, I know Child Protective Services cases are down, which is a bad thing, because that means that kids aren't in school, and that's where we find out all the detection of where bad things are happening. So we've got kids at home in situations, again, on the backside of this. What's going to be the, the ramifications of, of what we're doing, trying to find that balance? Um, a, a question that I, that I want to a- ask for certain industries, um, the dental industry, dentist, um, offices, I've got a ton of clients and a ton of friends that are in the dental, uh, that are dentists, or that work in that field. And, um, those people, um, deal with infectious disease every day, that's what they're trained to do, is deal with infectious disease. Um, they're going broke as we sit here trying to figure out, you know, whether they can open or not open. Um, scheduled procedures now can maybe start to happen. But the question is, and, and I want us really to be able to deal with it in this, in this county, is can these dentist offices open back up? I think the question is, yes, if they have the, the protective, personal protective equipment to do it. Um, and they're getting mixed messages at the state level from them, but I know at our local level, again, they deal constantly with infectious disease. And Julie, I don't expect you to be able to answer that question off the top of your head, but we've got to, we've got to give these people an answer, so that they know. I know hospitals, I, as Vito made reference to, are, 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 are bleeding. You know, I, I see hospitals, one up in, in Oregon actually just filed for bankruptcy. Um, you know, and, and it's because, it's because of what we're doing here, you know, for the sake of trying to protect people. But if we put out, if our healthcare industry becomes so strained as we get past this, um, how are they going to be here to help people for other issues that come up? And so, um, again, just, these are just things that just go through your mind constantly, trying to figure, you know, what are we doing, how are we going to get through this thing? But at, at some point, it comes down to, um, to, to, to personal choice and risk. You know, we're going to have to decide at some point, um, we need to protect our most vulnerable, we got that. But then we still have to, as individuals, which goes back maybe towards what Jim was saying, as individuals, we still need to have our rights, and we still need to be able to make our own personal choices, not to put other people at risk, but, um, to be able to go out and take those risks ourselves, um, doing everything we can to try to, try to minimize that. So, um, I, I think the governor's moving in the right direction here. I think he's really starting to yield to the local communities, which I think is necessary, too. Everybody's got their own situation, their own set of facts, and, and, um, and I think that's great, that he's starting to kind of move back and let us make choices here more on our own, because prior to that, it felt like we were being told this is what you have to do, whether you're, you know, Stanislaus County, or you're Los Angeles. You have the same set of, um, um, rules to follow, where our circumstances are in no way the same as in those communities. So, so I, um, so I, I'm, I welcome that, that we're finally getting to that point, and, um, and letting, letting us start to make our own decisions. So I very much look forward, as we move forward through this week and into next week, that we really will be able to start making decisions based on what's happening here in our community, really start to loosen things up, and, and with, with, with guidelines, I get it, with all the guidelines that we have to do, and get us to that point. So, um, again, just a lot of commentary here, more than anything else, but, um, but I know that all of us are, are dealing with this daily as supervisors, and I, and again, I just very much appreciate all of you and, and the efforts that you're making, and what we're all dealing through, none of us are sleeping at night, I know it, none of us are, are, are enjoying this, and, um, but we're doing everything we can to try to make the right decisions, um, to get us back to work as soon as possible, so that the backside of this won't be worse than the front side of it is. And again, I always keep saying, the consequences of our actions, I don't want those to be worse than the consequences of the virus that we're dealing with. And I very much appreciate everybody's efforts and, um, and the balance approach that we're trying to find. And I, and I, and I really look forward to hearing the next week, um, that we really get to a point where we really are loosening things up in our own community, based on a set of facts and circumstances that we have here, and that, um, and that we'll let people be able to get back to business, back to their lives, a little bit different lives, but still back to, um, to us doing business here in this community. And so, and, and just back to the dentist thing, I would really appreciate some guidance and help on that, Julie, we need.
Yeah, so, um, just a little comment about that. So the, the Dental Society here in Stanislaus County is in contact with me constantly. And, um, so we, we are discussing this, and it is a problem. Um, the hospitals, it, you know, the hospitals also have a problem, and everybody needs the same PPE. So, um, that, that's kind of where it is right now, is that, that is really the biggest shortage, I think, that we face right now. We've got to get that PPE up, everybody needs the N ninety-five masks, everybody needs the gloves. Um, and it's, it's, I'm hoping that soon there will be enough for everyone, but right now, that is, that is the balance and, and where we are stuck. So, yeah, I mean, I, it, I appreciate all your comments about risk, because that's really what it is. What's our risk of doing something, what's our risk of not doing something? And everybody judges risk a little bit different from medicine, that, that's why we make decisions, you know, what's the risk of doing this? What's the risk of not doing this? And then what are the benefits? So it's really, it's a constant weighing, and a constant looking at the data, and trying to figure out what we can do and how we can move forward the best way we can. Clearly, we can't stay locked in our houses for the next six months, that isn't going to work. There is going to be some risk, there's always a risk when we leave our homes. I mean, you know, you get hit by a car, a plane could crash on you. I mean, there's all sorts of things that could happen. So we're trying to make it as safe as we possibly can, and then watch how it's working, and, and, and what we're seeing in the data, to, to try to ensure that everything stays up and running, and we don't have to go backwards. That's really where we're going.
Perfect, thanks, Julie.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Vee. As we wrap up this item, I thought I would just summarize the announcements we've made today, in case people have just recently tuned in, so that it's clear. The new public health order should be online and available on the Stan Emergency website, possibly as early as later today, but certainly by tomorrow, for everybody's review. And what we are announcing is that as of Friday, this Friday, May eighth, at five AM, the following can open. Curbside retail, dog grooming, and drive-in movies. And online, there will be, um, more information provided as to how those can safely reopen. The order, or the frequently asked questions document online, will also clarify that outdoor boot camps, yoga, other types of outdoor exercise activities are allowed, even under the current order, as long as social distancing is practiced, and no equipment is shared. So that will be provided on the updated FAQ. And then we also want to announce today that Modesto Reservoir will open on May sixteenth for boating and watercraft, uh, within households. And then we anticipate opening Woodward Reservoir for the same activities, boating and watercraft, on June sixth. Uh, as we move forward, please do remember, don't gather in large gatherings. That was the reason for many of our increases in positive numbers over the last couple of days. And we hope everybody has a fantastic Cinco de Mayo, but please celebrate safely in your household.